So I'm gonna go ahead and call the planning mission for me in session. And we'll start with a roll call.
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tanelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sokoff.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Commissioner Lerner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, second item is public comments. And in this meeting, what we have is public comments beforehand for things that are on the agenda. Sometimes people come up and give us something that we didn't know about that starts the conversation. Other times we inform us of things going on in community. You know, amongst a lot of people show up and say, "What a great job we're doing." So all those things would be things that would be appropriate to... I think I'm gonna let that stop by. So little, so you know. So I will go ahead and open the public comment section for items that are on the agenda in case you have something that you just want to talk about. All right? Nobody's running?
I was gonna... I just started looking at this, I think I traded emails. My name's Joe Donahue, I live here at Atherton. I have just curious about the landscape screen codes for the front of the property for a lot of the fences. There's not really any requirements? The fence height can be six feet tall, but there's no requirements to landscape or screen it at all?
That's correct. There's no specific requirement for that. Although if there's an issue that it can be discussed as part of the planning process, then it's brought up, but there's no specific requirement to have anything up front.
Okay, is there a reason?
There are specific requirements not to have certain things up front. So like, there are no barriers outside in the easement area and throughout things like that. So there are specific things that shouldn't be in the area, but there's no requirement.
I just was wondering if we could study it. There's a lot of new fences that are just big cement walls with nothing in front. If we could add it to the agenda or do something to look into it or something like that. I don't know how to proceed.
All right, well, let's talk about that. One of the things about the standards in the community is as long as a person is making compliance with the setback and things like that, then usually the history of the town has been that it's up to the land holder to consider what they want to do. So like, in some planning missions, they actually, you can't use sharp crews because it would be bad for the neighborhood. But we don't have any design criteria in this and this. So we can talk about it in a standpoint of mitigation.
Well, there's none on the front. There's a lot of requirements for every other side. If you build a new house, you can't see that, and so it's very... Which is great.
Right.
But I don't know why there's nothing on the front property line. And if there's one, I'd look into it or study it or something.
So we can talk there. We can look into that, whatever the standards may need to be on that.
Okay, so then my hearing the commissioner would like to report back on the history as to why landscape screening was limited along the side and rear property lines and maybe what some of the implications or processes would be should you decide to discuss further amendments to the ordinance?
Yeah.
I agree with you about that.
Okay.
I've always wondered why.
Yeah, I mean, it's great to have around three sides, but I don't know why the fourth side.
Yeah, some of the...
Doesn't count, right? And I get if you're on El Camino or the major byways and stuff like that, but if you're in the residential neighborhoods and things like that, it's nice to have.
Some of the reasons are, it has to do with plumbing and electrical that are coming in and they're...
Sure, you know, I get that there's access in byways, but there's just absolutely nothing. So I think there should be some in the community.
All right, that's the proper use of this segment, so thank you.
Okay, how would I proceed or what happens next?
Well, we'll probably see some updating in the next month's meeting.
Yeah, now you have to come to every meeting.
No, we have this...
Done, I'll bring some plans with me.
Well, we can contact you, but we can contact you.
Well, we spoke over the day, right? So I have your contact information.
Yeah, sure, I sent some pictures and I'm happy to talk. And I just didn't know how to study it or what, you know, the best way to do it. Cool. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other items for this segment? Okay, hearing none, I'll go ahead and close the public comment. And then the next item is the approval of minutes from the last meeting from April 24th, planning mission. Yeah, they're getting pethier and pethier, so there's lots to adjust. All right, and there's a motion, second.
Second.
A second, of saying, because you weren't here. All those that gave a say aye?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention. All right? And then the next item is the public hearing segment. And let me just pull over the process we use on this segment. For each item, what we'll do is we'll start with an update from staff and they'll inform the sort of frame of a whole discussion for the commission. And then we'll go ahead and open up the public comment section typically started by the applicant or the representative of the applicant. And we'll hear that from them, and we'll close the public hearing session. And then we'll bring it back for the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So that will be the way we go every time. If anybody comes in late, I'll go through the rolls one more time so that nobody feels like they're about out of the process. All right? So with that, we'll start with item number 4A, which is a school master plan update. Do you have a say? Go ahead with that.
Thank you, Chair. So as the commissioners familiar, the town does have via ordinance, a policy to request that each private school within the town prepare a master plan. Each private school does indeed have one of those. It further specifies that an annual update is given on how that master plan is being implemented or any updates that the town could be seeing within the subsequent year. So Sacred Heart Schools has prepared their 2019 update to their adopted master plan. The update that's included in your staff report speaks to several different topics of activities that are being conducted within all the campuses pertaining to land use, circulation, parking, enrollment's always a key one for all of the private schools. It's, I think, worthy to note that the Sacred Heart Schools do have a cap as do all of the other private schools with the exception of Menlo College. And the Sacred Heart Schools' maximum enrollment is set at 1,196 students as part of this 2019 update. They are projecting a 20-student increase in the upcoming year, which would put them right at their maximum allowable enrollment. So should any further enrollment increase want to be considered, that would require an amendment to their existing conditional use permit, which allows for the operation of the schools of the property to begin with, which was issued many a year ago, I believe, back in 2009. So that was one important piece of the 2019 update. Secondly, there are some updates on some construction that's been going on at Sacred Heart School. A couple of the construction activities the commission has seen in other venues, one having to do with the construction of a new academic arts building, which the commission saw as part of a conditional use permit, an environmental document a few years back. So that's well underway. There's also additions to the Oakwood Retirement Facility within campus. The commission saw the construction related to some heritage tree removals and other improvements that the Oakwood wanted to do that triggered the need for tree removals. One other new update that we wanted to bring to your attention as part of this master plan for 2019 are some potential upgrades to the school's aquatics center. The specifics of that project have not been nailed down to a great level of specificity, but the school is identifying potentially building a new aquatics building either adjacent to the current aquatics facility or close by within the master plan campus. Should that project come forward in a formal capacity, separate application and process would be required, likely triggering environmental review. So somewhat similar to the process that you saw for the construction of their new academic arts building, you may see that again should they move forward formally with the construction of such a building. The new aquatics center wouldn't change enrollment or any other capacities of the conditional use permit, perhaps? We'd have to look into that, fall under their existing allowable uses, but just for the construction of a new building and any implications that that may have to their onsite parking or circulation plan depending on where the building may be situated. Also, part of their master plan update, as you see annually, is an evaluation of how their required transportation demand management program or TDM program is being implemented and how it's working. So these TDM programs, they require most of the schools to have some mitigation on their onsite traffic and parking. And so a third-party traffic environmental consulting firm has gone out and monitored the amount of vehicles entering and exiting the campus to make a determination if the amount of vehicle trips is being met under their existing regulations. So specifically, Sacred Heart Schools limited to 6,000 vehicle trips per day, and the updated TDM monitoring report for 2019 has determined they're well under that at a little over 4,600 trips per day. So with these master plan updates, staff does ask that the commission consider the master plan update, and for the reasons as I've mentioned and are detailed in the staff report, we recommend you just accept that master plan.
Any questions, staff? All right, hearing none? All right, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Good evening. Mike Dwyer for Sacred Heart Schools, I'm the Director of Operations. We've discussed this many projects before. First, I wanted to thank all of you for allowing us to build this new building. It is transformative in nature. It will help us allow students to learn in ways they've not learned before and teachers to teach in ways they haven't taught before. We sampled some ways that this building would assist us in one of our existing buildings by changing things around, introducing different furniture, different ways of teaching. And the interesting anecdotal information was that the teachers came back and said, "I didn't know before how important this would be to be able to teach in this fashion." And they are all looking at and finding new ways to teach as a result. And the students are finding new ways to learn, and specifically, it's around collaboration. It's around that free flow of information that people get to share one-on-one and then sometimes in small groups. Well, this new building will allow us to do that, so thank you very much. So the William V. Campbell Academic and Arts Building will open for the school year in August of this year. And to date, we're about 75% complete. We've had one minor injury on the site. And by, I'm gonna knock on wood every time I say something that is kind of one of those outliers. This was just somebody who used a knife wrong and cut their finger, and it was a super minor injury, but it's just something that gets tracked. Neighbor relations. We have had a few concerns from neighbors about parking, and we swiftly addressed those. We also had some early on where the police department was concerned about certain behaviors. Unfortunately, the codes were in the students' favor, but we were able to curtail those issues as well. And aside from an occasional impediment by a vehicle blocking an area, we have had no complaints from the neighbors in quite a while. And when we do get them, we address them immediately. We are on schedule. It's proving challenging because of the rain. We had 25 days built in as rain delay days. What that doesn't account for, though, is that when the trades get behind, they have to stack what they're doing, and then they follow all over each other. So right now, we're struggling to keep them on track and get the building in the manner in which it needs to be, but there's nothing that's gonna stop it from actually being open and ready for business. We are under budget at present, working towards continuing that direction. We have had some challenges and some things that we did not foresee, which happens all the time, but we were able to anticipate some of them and assign allowances up front. And those are actually in the positive because we overallowed, and so therefore the bids have been coming in lower than the actual. So that's allowed us a lot of flexibility to make sure we do things the right way. After we complete this building here, actually, not even before we complete the building, as soon as June 3rd, we're gonna start decommissioning our portable classrooms. You had given us permission to put those on with a special CUP. We thank you for that. It worked wonders for us. We do have some teachers who don't want to give up their portables, so they said they're gonna go on the truck with them. We told them, "Have at it." So once those are gone, we have to repair and replace the turf, and that will be done immediately following. Following with this as our major project for the year, you might recall that we set into motion to improve safety and security on campus. We did so with very concentrated efforts toward having an impact and having an immediate impact. We hired a Director of Safety and Security who was a former Atherton Police Sergeant, and we have implemented different policies and training and put in a kiosk check-in station at the main entrance of campus. So a few years back, we had put gates around all of the other vehicle entrances, and the challenging thing for us was how do we restrict or limit traffic going into the front gate? Because that was always the open part. So by putting in this kiosk, we challenge people that come during the school day. So it's maybe between 9:00 and 2:00 that we keep it closed, and we ask people their purpose on campus. It has stopped some parents who come five times a day, and that by association has helped us control our trips on campus. And I anticipate that that will definitely continue to be the trend because it's too much of a hassle for them to have to stop, wait for the arm to open up, and then drive in. So that has been very successful. We have added upgraded camera systems along with new access control. We've added gunshot detection devices that will, if a gunshot is in the immediate area, if it is heard and then a flash is seen, it will immediately notify the police department, and it will put the campus on lockdown through our automated system. Similarly, we've added an earthquake, early earthquake detection system that will notify us with probably half a minute to take cover, and that will also be immediate and through our emergency alert system. So we continue to add analytics to these things and allow these programs to talk to one another so that we have increased safety for our constituents. Going on to new products, projects, we talked a little bit earlier about the aquatics center. We have programs that the lower school has a PE class, and they have added in swimming and other pool safety classes. And with that addition, it's difficult to have them share the same quarters as the high school serves, so we're gonna add about 2,000 or 5,000 square feet, larger team rooms, some showers and lockers for the lower school. Still don't know what designs, still don't know exactly where, but we'll definitely be back to you when we get those plans put together. The other item that we were looking at, not us, but Oakwood, the nun retirement home, as you spoke of earlier, they started their parlor project just this week, and they intend to add two additional parlors towards the front of their facility, relocate their entrance, add an ADA restroom, and correct some of the parking issues that they've had by getting the cars a little bit off the roadway we have there. So their projection is to be done in December. I sure hope they're done a lot sooner than that, but that's going on right now. The second Oakwood proposal was something we talked about last year, and it's the possibility of them adding a modular housing unit in the center of their campus. I'm dubious about this because when you look at the actuaries of living nuns and the possibility of retirement and them moving to the West Coast, by 2025, there'd be half, half the facility would be empty. And by them spending the money to do this new facility, I just don't see right now that there's a need. As a matter of fact, they have 10 beds open at this moment, which, since I've been there four years, they've never had that many beds open. So we'll continue to watch that, and when they come to us and talk to us about that possibility, we're back talking to you about it. Onto the traffic demand management. We're about 23, I like to say 23.3% because it's like little kids, they're one and a half years old. Any .3, any .4 is a good win in the fight against traffic increase in the neighborhood. We are also, we continue our programs with carpooling, with dissuading people from driving directly on campus. We give incentives, we give bicycle certificates each year. People, they can, they ride their bicycle, they can get a tune-up for their bicycle free from the school. There's one more thing that we're looking at right now, and it's, the potential is to increase home-to-school bus service. The problem with that is, is each time you look at something like this, you're paying for an empty bus sometimes, and so it's about a $70,000 to $80,000 investment once you do something like this. You're spending, right now, we're spending over $1,000 per child that we transport that we do not charge back to them. If you were to spread that cost throughout all of our students, it'd be about $106, somewhere around there, but we're spending that $1,000 on just these individuals. So it's an expensive proposition, but one that we will invest in if it is something that benefits the community at large. Enrollment. So over the last two years, we have had projections that we didn't anticipate. We ended up leaving a lot of money on the table when you're 20 people down. We don't budget all the way to 1,196 because every year we would operate in a deficit. We budget somewhere in 1,183, something like that, just so that we don't overextend ourselves. Well, two years in a row, we got very surprised and ended up with below 1,180. And so that really impacts the budget. Right now, we're targeting the 1,196 because it's something we believe we can achieve, and we've put the admission offers out there, and we're waiting for acceptances. So once we know that, we'll have the total count, and we'll be able to update things at that time. And that's it for me.
Very true, very true. The traffic management is the best we have from any of the schools by far, and it keeps on getting better. I like that we have heat in the building, too. That's a cool, that's a cool...
It's heating and cooling.
Oh, it is? Whoa!
And it's gonna be a net zero building. We'll have solar on the entire roof.
Yeah, that would be, yeah, you'd be rocking on cold concrete. Yeah, so that's, and you said you had an evacuation plan, too?
Yes.
All right, so for what it's worth, I don't know about evacuation plans and other reports. Do we normally have an evacuation plan for the other schools?
I don't recall ever hearing one in any of the others.
Yeah, I don't remember a lot either.
No.
So to the degree that you wanna share it with your neighbors? Because I think that's gonna be a factor for a lot of schools and certainly in that area, that cluster right in there. So maybe we can make sure that they get a copy of that. Do we have a copy of that also or not?
Probably not.
Yeah, I have a...
I don't think it's ever been requested.
Yeah, well, we just be, I think I would be interested in seeing it just to have other schools know about what happened. Because I hold this up as the best report we get again and again, because it's thorough, covers the attendance, it covers the direction that the whole school is going, and it stays on plan, which is really great technology. So to the degree that we can share that with other private schools, that's a good thing.
It'd be great. And just this year, we did meet with Menlo School and went over some reciprocal plans that we have and actually invited them to use a plan that we have for reunification of students. And we left our reunification kits there so that if we have to relocate to their school, we will have the kit right there for us. And then the same thing, they will have their kit at our school.
Great, great.
You know, along the same lines there, I was just curious with that shock detection system. Can you explain how the automatic lockdown works and how the campus is affected?
The theory is that when one of those alarms goes off, it will pinpoint the location. It'll send that location immediately to the police department, and it will send out an alert to our system and lock down the campus. So that will then trigger people who are in the network of receiving those messages, which is through a system on their phones or computers called Share 911. I believe I talked about that two meetings ago. So that would activate either manual lockdown by personnel who are trained to do so, or with the doors that we have on our access control system, we'll lock it so that it's fail-safe from the outside. No one will be able to get in, but you can always get out. And it's just the degree of which we know information, we can then disseminate it, but that's how the system works for every one of our emergencies, actually.
Then Matt, a couple of the questions real quick. That'll be an aquatics center, the new one, will that be in addition to the current one?
Yes.
So then you'll have two after that one, if that goes through?
So what it'll be is, they'll be next to each other, and they'll become twin buildings. So right now, the way it is, there's an arch, there's a locker room, then there's an office building. Then we were thinking of doing a little breezeway and then a separate building so that all be one continuous line.
And then with the enrollment, as you approach 1,196, do you foresee any requests down the road in coming years to raise the ceiling of that?
We haven't discussed doing any of that. What we've discussed is possibly changing the enrollment at the lower school to increase enrollment at the high school, but we have not perceived yet of any thought of moving on to ask for additional headcount.
A couple of questions on the times that were highlighted. Do you have any idea how many times a year at the school is you using some of the TDM?
It's extremely rare. And it's usually to close down and clean up.
Yeah, including that at that time?
Right. Most, if there's a late event, so we're going to have a couple of events here coming soon. Common Ground, it's a local organization for teens. Their events are seven to nine, and so we allow for people to exit campus and then clean up. We have an auction, an annual auction that goes till 10:00 PM, but that's about the latest one that we've ever had.
And the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM thing, is that for the rock concert? It's a jail over there? What does that, what goes on at those event times?
The 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM?
10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. Highlighted, it says nighttime usage, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. We rarely have an event that takes place in this time frame. It does seem like an odd time frame to have an event.
So what we have each summer is we have a camp, and some of those camps spend the night. And so usually, it's one of our sister schools from around the country, and that's pretty much the only thing that happens between 10:00 and 7:00.
Yeah, I just thought of a unique little highlight that I had to... All right, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. Good for you.
Thank you.
All right, any other, anyone else here that's good to talk on this item? All right, and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. It's straightforward to me, and it's definitely the best report I see on the school. And everything's better and better in all the critical areas that we want, and the good neighbor aspect of this school is the best we have also. So there's just so many good things about it that it's just a role model for, and that we want a private school to do. All right, so there's a motion to be made, rolling motion.
I move that the planning commission accept filing, except for filing the 2019 annual master plan update and TDM monitoring report from Sacred Heart Schools.
All right, motion?
Second.
Motion, second. All over, raise the aye.
Aye.
Oppose, none. Asks is unanimously. All right, thank you very much. If you have any year, not be bored. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Item 4B, special structures permit, 40 DeBel Drive. What a cute street, what a cute street. All right, we'll start with the staff. A rock star's up, okay.
Yeah. So yeah, this item is for a special structures permit to offer a pool to encroach into the front yard setback at 40 DeBel. To give a bit of background, 40 DeBel is a 0.77-acre corner lot that has frontage access and side access on across DeBel Drive. Currently, the house has a, or the lot has a guest house, a pool, and a main residence that are being planned to be demolished. The applicant, in a future separate permit, would like to have a new house, a detached garage, and an accessory dwelling unit, as well as the pool that we're discussing tonight. The letter, the letter request from the applicant states that the pool will be situated wherever the current pool is, in the general proximity to it. It's noted that the pool that's existing now is also non-conforming in its front yard setback, just like the proposed pool would be as well. setback, just like the proposed pool would be as well. Excuse me. Usually for development standards for an accessory structure such as a pool, for the front yard setback, the requirement would be either a hundred and twenty feet back from the front property line or thirty feet back from the front of the main house. The proposed pool would be, I believe, sixty-one feet and one inch from the front property line and just about pretty close to in line with the, with the front line of the proposed new residence. Excuse me, my voice is kinda leaving me. What else? On the, the pool itself meets every other accessory structure setback, meaning the ten from the other side and then the, the ten from the rear and eight from the main residence. On the closest side to the neighbor at twenty-four DeBel, the one that's abutting, that side of the pool, that I believe is, I believe it's sixteen feet, they have a driveway. So that would, the, the proposed location of a pool would minimize kind of impact towards that neighbor in that regard. The town arborist reviewed the plans as well. It asserted determination that there is no, no real impact to any of the hermit's trees on site. The, the proposed location of the pool is outside of the tree protection zone for both a twenty-two inch oak and a fifty-four inch oak. However, if the pool was moved back to meet the development standards of either a hundred and twenty or thirty back, it might actually encroach onto the twenty-two inch oak's tree protection zone. The site does feature current landscape screening both along DeBel Drive and towards the, the neighbor closest to the proposed pool location. And the applicant is proposing to add additional landscape screening across both, both sides. The pool equipment would meet, would meet the standards for, for accessory structure as well. I believe it, it's proposed to be in the rear of the, of the property. So with that said, staff recommends approval of the structure, special structures permit for what we outlined during, during the staff report and as, as it says on the draft, special structures permit. I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, so this actually changed the access point for the property then?
Rather than being on the maple leaf side.
Yeah, so it actually effectively makes the front of the house, the side of the house, right? Or the side of the house, the front of the house?
In a, in a way, yeah. Because I believe that the, the entrance would be across DeBel on the, on the left side of your site plan.
Okay. All right, well, hit me up if you have any questions. All right, any questions with that?
Have there been any comments from neighbors at all?
Not that, not that staff has received.
I had one individual come in and they, they came in to look at the plans and they actually thought this property was a different property on DeBel, so they had no concern with the project.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, good. Then I'll go ahead and have a public hearing and we'll hear either from the applicant or the representative.
Sure. Hello, everyone. So my name is Joe Akimademark and I'm the owner of forty DeBel and the applicant here. I don't really have a lot of comments, but we did send out the plan to all our neighbors and we've discussed it with pretty much all of our immediate neighbors and universally the feedback's been very positive on the project. We walked through where the pool is, where the house is gonna be and all of that.
I didn't go farther down the street, Maple. I saw a home down there. Is there more than one down there? I just went to your property and sort of went by that side driveway and.
You've been behind us on Maple? There is one right behind us, but not as clear as you go in Maple, there are more.
When I said it's not like a thoroughfare of traffic going down there, it was very, very secluded when I went there and I, when I was just looking at this driveway to make sure there was no issue with the traffic coming around that corner and sort of being blind sighted by a car stop there.
Yeah, there shouldn't be. There's very little traffic and there should be visibility there. As a matter of fact, the current driveway has some issues with that.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I think around that corner, you could get hit twice before you got around the corner.
Yeah, exactly. We have kids biking out there, so they have strict instructions on that.
All right, good. All right, any, any other questions?
We do have the design team here, too, if you have questions.
All right, good. All right, well, it's a, it's a very interesting design. But that, it does flip the house, though, right?
It does flip the house.
It's flipping inside. Okay, great, that's the one I wanted to make sure of. All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Any other, anybody on the design team want to earn their money or not? All right, that's right. Your money might not save you. All right, then I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and no one else to speak. All right, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back for the discussion and action as a broker by the commission. Anything, anything to add right there?
I didn't have any issue. If anybody's, if everybody's okay, I'm happy to make a question.
Yeah, so when the site, with that combined with the plan, I just said, okay, looks straightforward. You know, I worry about the ink and the, the, actually, I mean, the street overall with all the trees and everything coming out there. I mean, just from the, we were talking about evacuation planning, our, our plan. That's one of the streets, I would say, you gotta, gotta make sure you know how to get out of it. But it was, but how, how much help would we get? Straightforward. I'm gonna make a motion when you're ready. I'm ready. I move that planning commission approve the special structure permit at forty DeBel Drive based on the findings and for the reasons enumerated in the staff report subject to the conditions listed in the special structure permit certificate to allow a pool to be located within a front yard setback. All right, motion second. All those, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You know, usually it takes another hour or so to.
No, no, no.
Thank you very much. Take your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for holding back for the design ceremony. Good luck on the, on the bill.
Oh, thank you.
That's been a very fast inside, but the last one with Kevin, you guys, you guys.
Yeah.
See how the chair does.
Wait until you see how fast I can read through the, the whereabouts. All right, because that has to be written on the. Okay, item four C, the recommendation of the city council, a recommendation, we consider the recommendation of the city council on the two thousand nineteen Appleton general plan update, the certification of the initial study mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report. The reporting program has itself. All right, I'll go ahead and let's, let's hear it from the staff.
Thank you, Chair. So this is our last meeting potentially with the commission as it relates to our general plan update process, which we have titled our twenty nineteen general plan update. But just a little bit of background, the process did begin with you at the planning commission level, starting in two thousand seventeen, in which we were following direction given to staff by the city council for a comprehensive update to the general plan less the housing element, which is updated on its own cycle according to state regulations. The direction given to staff was for this comprehensive update to address all California state requirements for a general plan as well as to update graphics, texts, and policies for internal consistency with other town adopted plans such as our bike, bicycle and pedestrian master plan, a Holbrook farmer park plan, et cetera. The commission has looked at each element in a study session format through two thousand seventeen and two thousand eighteen, provided comments. All of those comments were integrated into a revised draft that was then compiled into one comprehensive administrative draft general plan, which was circulated for public review beginning in February of this year. Community workshop was held also in that month. Townwide mailer was sent to every resident in Atherton. We've updated our website, trying to really get the word out there that this update was happening. Excuse me. Following that public outreach, or excuse me, public workshop, we came back to you last month with the administrative draft, that comprehensive cumulative plan for discussion as well as the, excuse me, associated prepared environmental document that under the California Environmental Quality Act, or CEQA, requires preparation of anytime you do a comprehensive update to a general plan. An initial study, which is a checklist per the provisions of the CEQA statute, was completed and that checklist goes through and answers template questions in different topics such as hydrology and water quality, cultural resources, et cetera. The conclusions of the initial study preparation, termination by staff, that while impacts to the environment were identified for implementation of the project, which is the update to the general plan, any impacts could be mitigated to a level of insignificance. Thus, the decision was made to prepare what's called a mitigated negative declaration as a type of environmental document to accompany this project. One note, and we talked a bit about this at the last meeting, so I won't get into the details, but happy to answer any questions in terms of specificity of those mitigation measures that were crafted as part of the mitigated negative declaration. But the type of project that this is, while it's not a specific development project, but a longer range program level type document, that is the premise of the MND, or mitigated negative declaration. So those mitigation measures or conditions of approval, some folks can call them, is not specific to the implementation of the general plan itself, but for projects that will fall under the new general plan that may trigger their own environmental specific document to be prepared. So that would be the time that those mitigations would be implemented. In terms of the impacts identified, the topics that were identified to have impact were related under the arenas of air quality, cultural resources, geology and soils, hydrology, water quality, noise, and utilities and service systems. The document was circulated for public, public review for minimum of twenty days as is required under CEQA, posted down at the San Mateo County Recorder's Office. That public review period has since closed. It ended on April twenty-fourth. No public comment was received during that timeframe, nor was it received at the discussion or study session that the commission held last month at your April meeting. So that concludes my overview of the environmental component of the project. So moving into the general plan itself, we talked about why the update is being conducted. We talked in broad context of what the update entailed. Following the meeting last month in which the study session again was conducted, in which that comprehensive document was reviewed by the commission for the first time, there was additional direction given to staff on some further refinements to be made to some of the elements. Those have been integrated into revised elements in a track change version. I'm gonna go through all of the changes and then we can get into each arena. So three areas of directed change have been integrated into the administrative draft, that comprehensive document. One, based on the direction given by the planning commission, again at your study session last April. Two, given conversations that staff has had with our town's public works department and another effort that the town is undertaking in the preparation of what is called a green infrastructure work plan. The process to create this, what they're calling a GI plan, state mandated. This happened after our general plan update process had already began. So while you were in your study session months, this direction was given. The town hired a third-party professional consulting firm to help in the preparation of that plan. They have reviewed the administrative draft version and provided some comments that they would like integrated so that ultimately when their GI plan gets adopted, similar to, say, the town's drainage plan or bike and master plan, that these documents were internally consistent in terms of what they are all trying to achieve. So there has been text added to be consistent with what the long-term goals of this green infrastructure work plan is. And I'm sorry, I should back up and just give a Cliff Notes version of what a GI plan is. And it is working to address the town's municipal storm drain system and how the town will shift from its traditional, not its, but all, pretty much all communities, traditional, what they call gray storm drain infrastructure into a quote, more green stormwater, so it'll be more infiltration, more vegetation, et cetera. That plan has yet to be finalized. It is intended to be brought to the council in June for its first round of discussion. So I just want to note that some of the recommended changes that came forth related to green infrastructure could potentially change down the line depending on what that final plan and the council direction may be with that. And then thirdly, a few other additional revisions that the commission did not discuss have been made by staff and that was after we took another look at it and really, I like to call them cleanup items. We made some updates related to the civic center. The drafts that you had seen before were all based off of the original civic center master plan that was adopted, oh, it's ten years ago, maybe more. The final construction plans have since been approved and that all happened, of course, after you've already started these study sessions. And so there was a few changes in the layouts of buildings. And I think the biggest change was what we called here around town hall and the old libraries, gone, as a reading park, has now been renamed the civic center park. And so I had that area of quote, open space land recalculated. The park area actually has increased under the new construction plans from the civic center master plan. So I updated reference to that within the land use and open space conservation elements. We updated some of the diagrams as well for consistency. We also made some updates, textual updates to the circulation element, not to policies, but to descriptions. We found some erroneous references to Caltrans standards for bikeways as well as a high-speed rail project, which had evolved as well since the time that the document was originally drafted, as well as some recent direction we received from the transportation commission on minimum pavement width for streets. So we're just trying to make everything, again, as internally consistent as feasible. And then lastly, in the community safety element, we removed a policy related to flood planes and flood control districts, as there are none within the town, so as well, it seems really kind of a moot point, so we recommend to take that out. Without reprinting a complete comprehensive twenty nineteen general plan, what we did was for specifically four elements, the land use element, the circulation element, the open space and conservation element, and the community safety element, those changes have been noted in track change version. I also highlighted them to help draw the attention as to where those changes would be. And then each change should have either a comment inserted or a footnote to indicate where the source derived as to why we may be recommending that the change be made. So what we are asking for from the commission tonight is one final look at the administrative draft twenty nineteen general plan that would include those four elements in track change versions that I made mention of, any further revisions that you'd like to see to the document, and ultimately requesting that the planning commission adopt a resolution that would do two things. It would recommend to the city council that they certify the prepared environmental document, the mitigation, or excuse me, the mitigated negative declaration, which includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which really is a resource document or appendix to the MND that extracts all of those mitigations or conditions of approval, provides a greater level of specificity as to who's gonna implement it and when it's gonna be implemented. And then secondly, that the council, excuse me, adopt the twenty nineteen general plan with the revisions as noted in those track change version elements.
Good report. You did that, you did that in one breath. All right, good. All right, any questions with staff?
It's really good work. Really good work. And really, really good.
All right, so I'll go, so any more questions with staff? I'll go ahead and open the public, the public hearing segment. All right, there's a, I'm opening public hearing. All right, good. So we got refusal to come up. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing segment and bring it back for discussion and action from the commission. This is about our fifth or sixth discussion on this one?
Three, four, five, six. Six or seven, actually.
Seven, yeah. Okay, good. So we, you know, we've done our homework on this one and, and you've definitely done all the work, so I really appreciate you letting me read it. All right.
I feel it's talked out. I think it's great.
Yeah, I do too. So I just wanna clarify in terms of action, there's two actions that we have to approve tonight, actually three things we have to do according to what I understand here. One is that we have to go ahead and determine how we're gonna move ahead on the recommendation of the initial mitigation of negative. There's a, there's a motion to be made on the, on the plan itself and there's a motion to be made on the capital program specifically. There's a move for the planning commission on the capital improvement program. Is that a separate motion?
Separate item?
Yeah.
So we have the capital improvement program as item. So we have the capital improvement program as item 4D under new.
Okay, that's good. So that, all right, I was looking at, wanted to connect that though. So according to the document that I received, this has to be read over the minutes. Is that correct?
Do you want the whole, the whole resolution read?
No.
We can.
Oh, man, I've actually.
Unless you want to. I think.
Otherwise, we can reference it as is.
The only reason I bring it up is because the document that I signed says the following resolution was read, considered, and adopted by the regular meeting. So under those conditions.
So with the change that you've noted, you can reference it if you want, if you want to just go, you are welcome to read it, but I would be comfortable with you referencing the printed document and mending where it says, we should say.
Make my motion so.
So you would change your.
So rather than reading it, would be said if the motion was presented.
Was, was.
Presented, considered.
Well.
Or.
It was also read by all of you, just wasn't read out loud, so.
Here, I'll read it real quick.
You just want to.
No, I don't want.
For any bad.
I just want, I just want to make sure there's no question on this, no matter what.
I feel comfortable with it, but that's even better.
All right.
She's just our lawyer.
Yeah.
Resolution, not verdict.
A resolution from the planning commission of the town of Atherton recommending the city council certify the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, the ISMD, mitigation monitoring and reporting program, MMRP, and adopt the 2019 general plan update whereas the article five, the chapter three of the division one, division one of the title seven of California government code beginning in section 65330, requires the city adopt to concrete belonging to the general plan for the physical development of the city and any land outside its boundaries, which is in the planning agencies judgment period in relation to the planning period of the updated general plan again, whereas section 65350, SEC, sets forth a procedure to amend the city plans at the option of the local legislative bodies when it deems such amendments to be in the public interest, and whereas the city council initiated the updated city's existing general plan accepting the housing element by approval of 2015, 2016 applicant budget, and whereas the applicant planning department's staff prepared draft updates for the land use, circulation, open spaces, and conservation noise, and community safety elements, and whereas the applicant planning commission reviewed and commented on each updated draft element, the regular planning commission needs for the, from the time to time during the 2017, during, time during 2017, 2018, and whereas on February 13th, 2019, the city held a notice of public community workshop to present and discuss the 2019 general plan, and whereas subsequent to the public community workshop, the acting and planning department staff incorporated the comments from the workshop and the planning commission review and the comments to the town about the general plan, 2019 administrative draft, 2019 general plan update, and whereas the 2019 general plan update constitute a project as defined by the California Environmental Quality Act CEQA, and whereas applicant planning department staff prepared an initial study and draft of mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and report programming, MMRP, analyzing potential environment effects of the 2019 general plan update, and recommending mitigation measures to reduce potential adverse effect to less than significant, and whereas the notice of the intention that the adopt the initial study and mitigation, mitigated negative declaration, the ISMD, for the 2019 general plan update project was published in the Ominac, the newspaper of general circulation, this town of Atherton, posted in the town bulletin boards and published in the town of Atherton website on April 14th, April 4th, 2019. The public review period was April 4th through April 24th, 2019, and whereas on April 24th, the planning commission held a duly noted public meeting study session for the purpose of receiving testimony on the ISMD and the MMRP and discussion of the 2019 general plan update, and whereas section 65103 provides the planning commission acting as the planning agency is charged with the administration of the city's general plan and with making recommendations on amendments of the city general plan, and whereas on May 22nd, 2019, the planning commission held a duly noted public hearing for the purpose of receiving testimony on the 2019 general plan update, and whereas the planning commission prior to making this recommendation, the city council considered all testimony, both oral and written regarding the ISMD and MMRP and the proposed general plan changes. After closing the public hearing on May 22nd, 2019, the general, the planning commission therefore adopted resolution number 2019, or dash 01, recommending that city council certify the ISMD and MMRP and adopt the general, 2019 general plan update. Now, therefore, the result as follows. Section 1 recitals the planning commission hereby finds that foregoing recital are true and correct. Section 2, certification of the initial study and draft mitigated negative declaration, the initial study and draft mitigated negative declaration, the ISMD, and the mitigation monitoring and report program, MMRP. The project was completed and circulated for the public review in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act. Notice, notice public hearing held by the planning commission on the ISMD and the initial study and mitigated negative declarations, considered by the planning commission prior to taking action on the 2019 general plan update. The planning commission hereby recommends that the city council certify the initial study and mitigated negative declaration, which includes the mitigation monitoring and report program. Section 3, adoption of the 2019 general plan update, the planning commission hereby recommends that the city council adopt the town of Atherton 2019, the general plan, 2019, administrative draft, 2019 general plan update, including exhibits A through D of this resolution and those changes directed by the planning commission subsequent to closing the public hearing. Section 5, effective date of the resolution shall be taken effective immediately upon the adoption, and foregoing resolution was read, considered, it was really read, considered and adopted, the recommendation of the planning commission of the town of Atherton, state of California on the 26th of May, 2019, by the following vote, and then that would require that somebody makes a motion to unmoved, that we accept the.
I missed something in the first paragraph.
Pre-graduate.
The committee's probably proposing to subsequent planning, the commission's planning button. All right, so I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion that we make recommendations to the council. There's a motion, a second?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Aye. Opposed, none? Passed unanimously.
I think it was the reading that did it.
Yeah, it's worked, yeah. You know, Ellen would change my life. My mouth does not move as fast as my eyes.
What was it like, a flower?
The mouth is about the same. Okay. Oh, man. All right, then we go on to the new business, which is item 4D, the general plan, consistency determination for the capital improvement program fiscal years 2018 through 2019 to 2023, 2024. So staff reports.
Thank you. So annually, the town brings forward to the planning commission a draft capital improvement program project, or CIP plan. And what the town is asking of the commission is to review the CIP program for a determination that the identified projects in the CIP, projects slash programs, I should say, are consistent with the town's general plan. At this point, we have prepared your request to make a recommendation of general plan consistency with the current draft CIP under the town's existing adopted general plan, i.e. your 2002 version. So following the commission, before we get into what those programs and policies identified in the draft CIP are, following commission's discussion, what happens with this is then the draft CIP is brought forward to the city council with the note that the planning commission either did or did not make a determination that their identified programs and projects are consistent with their adopted general plan, and then formal action can be taken on the CIP. So the CIP, the CIP or capital improvement program, again, it includes programs and projects that are identified either by the city council, by residents, by staff, and by other adopted master plans, such as the bikehead master plan, et cetera. The CIP does include a program policy out toward the fiscal year of '23, '24, but only projects that are identified as being funded are under the current fiscal year, so 18, excuse me, 19, '20, or upcoming fiscal year, I should say. So what kind of projects have been identified in the draft CIP? They are related to streets and transportation, drainage, and town buildings and park facilities. So for the first, first off, within streets and transportations, the draft CIP identifies projects pertaining to traffic control device programs, traffic safety improvement programs. Again, as I made mention of, implementation of some identified projects under the town's adopted bicycle and pedestrian master plan. Specifically, this has to do with construction of some bike lanes, improvements for pedestrian and bicycle safety on more heavily used roadways that service the parks and the schools, and to continue moving forward and seeking any grant funding to get those projects actually built. Two more street and transportation programs and projects identified in the draft, CIP have to do with road maintenance programs, that's usually an ongoing one. Those specific streets are identified that using a methodology PCI, they call it, or pavement condition index program, that happens every November, and it targets those streets that need the most repair. And then lastly, the town has an adopted neighborhood traffic management program that also involves annually to implement traffic calming measures throughout targeted streets as warranted. So the second topics of projects have to do with drainage improvements in the Atherton channel. Drainage improvement programs are implemented through the town's adopted drainage master plan. These things identify improving safety, reducing flooding, and helping to mitigate other environmental damage that can occur over the course of the seasons in, within the channel itself. The channel monitoring, that's another program that helps kind of fold back to the project I just made mention of, so continually monitoring the channel as part of our regional water quality control board permitting requirements for the channel way itself. And we have noted there are some endangered species within our channel previously, the red-legged frog and some other plants, and so some of those improvements are to identify to help provide adequate habitat for both. And then lastly, the third area of programs and projects identified in the capital improvement program have to do with town buildings, our parks, and other facilities. So there's accessibility improvements that have been identified for deficiencies in town facilities. There's, for example, upgrades being made down at the baths, some of the bathrooms at Holbrook Park for ADA compliance. The second one was to implement the civic center master plan, which is currently underway. The construction contract has been finalized, and we are scheduled to begin in a few weeks here.
When was the planning group, when I have this, when they?
Oh, yeah, I was going to make that in staff comments, but we, we'll be moving these meetings, as well as the council meetings, down to the Jennings Pavilion in Holbrook Armour Park, and we will have audio and video, and we will be down there until it's safe to come back over this way.
For two years.
Two years.
Yeah.
It's actually nice over there.
I don't like the speed loss, but everything else is good.
Yeah. So we'll be changing the agenda, location, and everything will be updated on the left as well.
And that way more people can have our meetings.
That's good.
Yeah. And then two more components have to do with the Atherton library, which of course falls under the guise of the civic center master plan, and then our park improvement plan. You may mention, for example, some of the ADA upgrades being made to the restrooms down there at the carriage house. So with all of that, and as identified in the staff report, these, all of these projects and programs that are drafted in the capital improvement program have been found to be consistent with your 2002 adopted general plan program. I did put a few references in there as well to some of our updated or recommended updated policies, goals, and actions in the 2019 general plan, which is also are found to further substantiate a basis for supporting those identified programs and projects. So with all of that, the recommendation is that the commission find the capital improvement program for fiscal years 19, '20 through '23, '24 to be consistent with the town's adopted general plan.
All right, okay. Any questions of staff? I have to list one, sort of endangerment particles remaining. It's unlikely that the town will be able to achieve the maintenance required by SP1 to continue to receive SP1 funds, so does that mean we won't get housing funds or something? It's on page eight. It says, it's, so does that mean because we don't achieve the, the limit, we don't
Yeah, I see the last sentence. I don't know definitively. The.
I didn't, I didn't know if that meant you got a penalty for not achieving it, or?
Yeah. I don't know the answer to that.
I just wanted to make sure.
Sure.
Screw the stuff.
Yeah, no, that's good. I don't know the answer to that, but I certainly, so this program, this would fall under, yeah, funding revenues and sources. I'd have to check with the city manager's office and see the implications of that to be able to answer that question definitively.
Somehow relates to general revenue spending, so I think it's a technicality about how we're spending, where those funds are coming from, so it's probably something formulaic.
Yeah.
So maybe if we didn't allocate enough funds to.
Or we're already using enough funds, there, there's something there. I don't know. My takeaway, to be double-checked, is just that the town doesn't meet that requirement, so we can't have that.
Yeah, and all I wanted to do, if there was a penalty for not, I want that to be listed. If there's no penalty, then if, if it's an FLI, it's one thing, and it's a, oh, we should have asked that question, that's why I ask it. Okay. All right, anything else? That's all I have.
Up to me.
All right.
It's great.
Okay, so we can go ahead and make an action in the way you double-check that, is that correct?
Yeah. I have noted that to staff. Staff, we clarify that, make sure it's correct.
All right, good.
Could you go back and read like the first four pages?
Yeah. I was going to ask you to read, I start, starting the CIP in the record.
I know. The planning commission find the capital improvement program for fiscal years 19, 2019, 2020 through 2023, 2034, and the projects included in that program are consistently active in the general plan. Photo basis noted in the staff report.
All right, do I have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or none? So that be granted, please. All right, so then I have 4E, the commission's report, the unit's mission report.
I had a thank you. Almond Roll, Stephanie, thank you. 46 Almond Roll has finally done, I thought it was hoping Jones is going to survive this, this hour, but they've now started out front and it looks really good, so thank you.
Good.
So I was in here last month, and I saw that in the minutes, what was the issue there? It's just the lack of landscaping and finishing the project there, 46?
Yeah, they haven't done, they haven't really done anything other than their kind of work around the.
Yeah, there's something like garbage can up there, and there's waffles still out on the outside.
It's terrible. I mean, so anyway, but then all of a sudden, plants, the service is starting and all that, so now they've screened it out front. I almost took a picture today, but they've screened it out front, all small, but I mean, it'll grow, but it just, it takes your eyes off what's going on inside, so.
And what was the issue you brought up at AD8 Park?
AD8 Park is a corner, always, always.
Right.
Complicated, but the sidewalk, Stephanie, the sidewalk, when you drive around that corner, that sidewalk hits you in the face.
It's a big block.
Yeah, so if you, if you go over there, just go walk it. This is, this is their, I saw Almond Roll, not the park lane. This is that little street there off of Almond Roll.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a little corner, and you go around that corner and it's just boom. So it's, I think it's just that when we had that whole sidewalk discussion a while back, this is a modern home, and it is right in your grill when you're walking by. So the neighbor, the same neighbor that asked me about 46 Almond Roll, had said, hey, by the way, would you come over there? I happen to live in a rancher right next door. So no palm trees on it, but otherwise it's a nice rancher.
Okay. All right. Any other, any other updates?
But thank you. Neighbors, sure.
Yeah, and while we're on the.
Listen, thank you. This was great work. This is really great. I've, I've been through a lot of these processes, you know, in 17 years, I've seen a bunch of general plans. This is the best, cleanest, easiest to read, most understandable general plan that I've ever seen in 20 years.
Really good.
Really good.
And by the way, really simple. That, I like the all one, right? I mean, there's only so much that happens in this town.
And the lawyer earned their money on the whereas is on resolution.
That.
All right. And now, the next item is staff report.
Just, I may mention that we are last meeting in here for quite a bit, so the next meeting, the agenda and everything, we'll send a friendly reminder to, but we'll be down at Jennings Pavilion.
All right. I'll come home. Fair. All right, item 4G is a German thing, is there any debate on that? All right, you have any emotion? Emotion to the term?